Go ahead and call to order our April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular briefing agenda. For the Mason County Board of Commissioners, uh, looks like we're beginning with. A briefing this morning on Sweetwater Creek with Mendy Harlow and Larry Capola. And is Larry on? I see Mendy's here. Do we want, are we waiting for Larry Mendy? I can't, we can't hear you, Mendy.
How about now?
Gotcha.
Thank goodness. Um, I use Zoom all the time and don't usually have that problem. So I don't know that Larry um is going to make it on time this morning. He said he had a um conflict. And was going to try to make it when he could, so. I am prepared to go ahead and deliver the presentation if that's okay with you. Great. So, um. Do I have the ability to share my screen?
Uh, I think you should.
Okay. Alright, so everybody can see my PDF of the presentation? Great, so first of all, I wanted to say thank you for um allowing me to be here today to speak about the Sweetwater Creek Water Wheel Park project. Um, I'm Mendy Harlow. I'm the Executive Director of the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group. And we are partnering with the Port of Allen on this very important uh project that will be a park in North Mason County. And I all, do you want to see, does everybody see my cursor as well? Okay, great. Excellent. So, uh, we uh wanted to get you familiar with the um park, the Sweetwater Creek Water Wheel Park. Uh, that will be located in North Mason County, just off of Highway Three and just south of Belfer Elementary School. I know that I've walked the project with a couple of you in person and um. Wanted to be here to answer any questions and walk through um some of the elements of the park as well. So, um, today I'll go ahead and review the history of the site, uh, review the history of the project. And the project conceptual designs and elements, and then also talk about some of the next steps that um we're taking to make this park a reality. So as I mentioned, the park is proposed to take place on what we call the Schindelheim property, which is located just south of Belfer Elementary School. It's on Highway Three and it's across from what is the um, what used to be the Theller Community Center, but. Is now an early childhood learning center for Belfer Elementary School. So a little bit about the property's history, so um it was developed in the nineteen thirties. Between the nineteen thirties and nineteen fifties, it was a gas station. And then the nineteen fifties and nineteen seventies, there was a restaurant and antique store added to the property. So it's our understanding that the um water wheel was developed during the nineteen fifties through the nineteen seventies as a novelty. And it kind of complemented the business that was operated up, you know, outside of the antique store. So in nineteen ninety-seven, um, the North Mason School District applied for an Alea grant in order to acquire the Schindelheim property. And the purpose of the acquisition was to add to the Hood Canal Watershed Project and Theller Wetlands, which comprised one hundred and fifty acres of. Uplands to tidelands in public ownership, specifically for environmental education and public access. The property also has a remote site incubator located on Sweetwater Creek. It has been instrumental to our salmon in the classroom curriculum and salmon lifecycle education for Belfer, Belfer Elementary School. Each year we release about a hundred and twenty thousand juvenile salmon from that incubator, which is um viewed by the school as well. So knowing that the property had previously had a filling station on, onsite, uh, we um. Applied for an EPA targeted brownfields assessment. Where we hired a consulting firm to perform ground penetrating radar to identify the underground storage tanks onsite. We qualified for a cleanup grant in two thousand and five and performed the underground storage tank removal. In January of two thousand and six, we also installed monitoring wells on the site to monitor the groundwater. In two thousand and nine, Bruce Dees and Associates was commissioned to draw up a conceptual design for the Water Wheel Park. The project elements included restoration of the water wheel and rerouting a majority of the creek water around the pound, the pond to allow for fish passage. Unfortunately, the project stumbled in two thousand and ten because it was determined that since the elevation change from the bottom of the water wheel pond. To the top of the pond was approximately twenty-two feet. So we need to acquire an additional parcel in order for the stream to have a gentle enough gradient for fish passage around the pond. So toward the end of two thousand and fifteen, uh, the parcel was acquired by Dr. Brian Peterson, a local proponent for the park. Allowing the project to move forward. So that's the red parcel on the map there. In October through December of two thousand and fifteen, we did a private fundraising campaign to complete a new land survey. Create an updated conceptual design and thirty percent design drawings for the project. The conceptual design was completed in early January of two thousand and sixteen. And it includes an ADA accessible pathway around the pond with multiple interpretive stations. The project also includes a picnic shelter and a natural play area. The play area would be made out of wood and rock structures that would encourage play in a more natural environment. And includes public restrooms along Highway Three with solar panels and a Tesla power wall. Double restrooms with a storage shed for equipment to be used to maintain the park property. And the parking area will include two ADA accessible parking stalls, nine regular parking stall stations and. Two electric vehicle charging stations as well. So the water wheel will include an interpretive building so that we can create educational opportunities regarding the importance of hydropower in our state's history. And you are probably familiar with the Dalby Creek Water Wheel that's located on Highway one oh six across from um Alderbrook Resort. Uh, the water wheel at Sweetwater will have a similar look to that water wheel, but the building will be open as an interpretive structure. With high visibility from the road and a great spot for folks to travel through the community and stop and rest, take a walk. And learn a little bit about the salmon lifecycle and also hydropower. So unfortunately, when the salmon, the juvenile salmon that we released from the incubator and the wild salmon that naturally populate Sweetwater Creek. Get to the bottom of this water wheel spillway, they have about a ten-foot drop from the top of the spillway to the bottom. And so they currently can't make it around to the pond, so their, their spawning habitat is very limited. And so part of this park again will create a fish bypass channel. So that those fish can get around the water wheel pond, so the acquisition of the Peterson parcel. Made it so that we can develop that, that channel that goes around. The pond allowing for fish access to the upper parts of Sweetwater Creek where there's a lot of spawning habitat. So the park also includes an ADA accessible fishing dock, which would be the only freshwater ADA fishing dock in Mason County. There are others that are saltwater access, but this would be the only freshwater access. In two thousand and seventeen, the North Mason School Board who owned the property because they acquired it with the Alea Grant. They decided that they did not want to develop a park on the property and that we would need to find another public entity to own the land. Before we could create the park there. Fortunately, the Port of Allen stepped in and accepted the transfer from the North Mason School District, which became effective in two thousand and eighteen. Since then, we've been partnering with the port to make the development of this twenty-five-year-old park vision a reality. So we've added some security features to the park such as call boxes. And a visual barrier to the school where it's needed along the property boundary. Uh, there are some places along the border between the school and the proposed park. That are highly vegetated and then others that will need more of a privacy fence. So we're, we're, we've added that into our, our project budget. Our biggest challenge at this point is of course securing funding for the development of the project. Every year, every other year since two thousand and sixteen, uh, we have been seeking funds through the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program. Which is a, a state uh funding program that funds uh things like parks, trails, um, public access. Last year, uh, we did receive a significant cash donation that is allowing us to purchase um. The Peterson parcel and start the cleanup uh portion of the project on that property. Our future challenges include uh changing the zoning on the parcels, which are currently zoned with a mix of. Multi-family residential and mixed use, um, so I'd need the commissioners' help with uh making sure that we can change the zoning there. And then um I've also included a letter of support for the project. That I'm hoping that the county commissioners today will be able to adapt and sign for us for our upcoming grant deadline, which is in early May. So, um, I. That's what I've prepared as far as information for today, and I wanted to find out if there are any questions or if there are any. Other um things that we need to include within the, the park proposal at this time.
Great, thanks. Um, I have a few questions, but commissioners, if you, um, if you have any, I'll certainly yield to you first.
A quick one, sorry, my voice goes in and out, I love these allergies. The, the zoning, so you'd have to get the zoning changed for both parcels, correct?
So the um Schindelheim parcel is interesting, so the highway frontage is zoned as mixed use. And then the upper portion of the property is zoned as multifamily residential. And then the Peterson parcel is, is zoned as multifamily residential. Um, it's really interesting though, because they're right on the edge of the, the water, and so they're not really developable anyway. There are a lot of wetlands in there and it would just, it'd be a real challenge to put any development in there that's not. You know, open, open space park uh type of thing. So yes, they, they both would need to have um a change in zoning.
Okay, and, and, and right now your, um, that area is listed on ecology's. List for fish passage?
Yes.
It is. Or for a, I guess it's not for a fish passion, passage, but um, not in a good way.
Right.
Have you reached out to them?
Yeah, so we. Yeah, um, so we work with ecology um a lot on different projects and. Typically, when we reach out about a specific project, it's um in the thirty to sixty percent design where we're looking for permits. So we have not um worked on applying for permits for this project yet because we're just not at that phase in the development of the design. We have been working a lot with Department of Fish and Wildlife though on this project specifically. They have um committed to allowing us to stock the water wheel pond with trout. That would be um available for folks to fish for. Um, and they're also, they've kind of reviewed the thirty percent design, um, making sure that it's going to. Pass muster for fish passage rules, so that was one reason why we had to acquire the, the Peterson parcel in order to move forward with the project. Because different species of salmon require different gradient, uh, different gradient to swim upstream in, and the ones that. Typically use this watershed are um fall chum. And they aren't as strong as species like Coho or Chinook, so they don't, um, they can't swim up as steep of a gradient. So we've been working a lot with Department of Fish and Wildlife, um, but as far as Department of Ecology goes, we will be working with them in the next phase of the project.
Great. Gosh, seems like I had another question and now it just left me, so.
Okay.
Call you.
Commissioner Nada, any questions?
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so um, the fish passage barrier was a big uh issue, um, you know, that I was, I'm happy to hear that you're talking about. You know, I'd, I'd be, I'd be supportive of signing the letter if we could put language in there about making every effort to. You know, comply with uh removal of, of the fish passage barriers. Mendy, as you know, I'm, I'm on the Hood Canal Coordination Council and Alliance for a Healthy South Sound, and now the. Puget Sound Partnerships Ecosystem Coordination Board and, um, you know, removal of those uh passages to the extent possible is definitely a priority of. The state, and I think it's one that we share, we put a lot of money into that, and, and I think it would ultimately uh strengthen your project. Um, if, you know, if we were um able to, you know, continue to work on removing those. And just to be clear, did you say that Dr. Peterson was donating the parcel?
Uh, no, so Dr. Peterson acquired the parcel in two thousand and eighteen, late in the year. Or, I'm sorry, two thousand and fifteen, late in the year, and um he is just holding the property for us until we can acquire funds to purchase it. From him for what he has put into it, so he's not asking for the appraised value of the property. He's only asking for the purchase price plus what he's paid on taxes and insurance since then, so it's not um. It's not a situation where he bought it and expects to sell it back to us at fair market value, he's donating a significant amount of the. Value of the land to the project, so it was just, he had, you know, funding available and I did not to, you know. Purchase the property which had gone into foreclosure um back in two thousand and fourteen, so. Since it was in foreclosure, he was able to contact the bank and since he had cash in hand, he could buy it. It would have been very complicated for us to seek grant funds to buy a foreclosed property. So.
Yeah, I heard that he was uh donating, it's, that's good clarification, and you feel like that fifty thousand dollars is, that you secured is adequate?
Yes, more than, it's more than adequate.
More than adequate, okay. Um, and then I guess the other uh question that I have is, um, also, I guess, just happy to hear that you're talking about the safety issues. So that seems like that's something that has come up routinely with this park in, in terms of its location to the, to the school, so happy to hear that. Uh, who else have you uh secured letters of support from?
Yeah, so um I've secured a verbal letter of support from the Superintendent of the North Mason School District, Dana Rosenbach. We've also, um, Larry and I have met with the, um, well, Larry has met with Ryan Spurling. Of the Mason County Sheriff's Office as well as uh Bo Bachan from the North Mason Regional Fire Authority. Both of them have committed to um. Letters of support for the project, we've got letter of support from the um North Mason Chamber of Commerce, uh, North Mason Rotary. And a slew of just citizens in the community that are um, you know, supporters of the project, really want to see the project move forward. And I also wanted to mention too, there was, um, I'm on the um Mason County Parks and Trails Advisory Board. And um, there was a survey that was put out um last fall. And this project was included in that survey, and there was also a lot of community support um that was received as a result of that survey as well.
Great. Yeah, so would you mind sharing the letters of support that you do have with me, and I, and I guess the other side of that is, um, have you talked to our legislative delegation since you're seeking? State funding, have they been, have they been willing to jump on board with letters of support as well?
Yeah, so I have um in past years secured a letter of support from Dan Griffey. And he's been very supportive of the project all along, um, I haven't reached out to him yet this year to get a new one, but um have plans to do that for sure. He's um, again, been very supportive of the project, um, I have not reached out to um Drew McEwen yet, and I will definitely do that. Both very important people to reach out to in this case. And um, of course Sheldon too, I, um, when we originally proposed this project back in two thousand and sixteen. I gave a presentation to the commissioners then and, and uh Senator Sheldon was on the commissioners. Or Board of County Commissioners back then as well. So they're definitely all familiar with the project, but that's a great suggestion, I will definitely reach out and try to get. Letters of support from those individuals as well.
Great. You know, and of course, the other, the other caveat, and I think the commissioners would agree with this is, um, you know, it's difficult for us to commit to any kind of. Rezoning or, or um any of those things since, you know, that's, um, there's a process that you have to go through in order to, to do those and. We, we wouldn't want to prejudice the, the, the process on that by, by committing to anything, um, either in a letter or, I guess even verbally today. So we'll just keep an eye out for that, I guess, as that moves through. And so would it be helpful if I, if I suggested some language in an email to you on, on the fish passage barrier, or do you think you can? You can kind of put that into the letter and then send it back over?
Yeah, I can, I can definitely put it into the letter unless you would prefer that um we use your language. Okay, great.
You know a little bit about, you know a little bit about fish passage barrier removal?
Yeah, yes, thank you. Yeah, great, I really appreciate it, I will um revise that and get that sent back over to you.
Excellent. Okay, commissioners, anything else for, for Mendy?
No, I'd like to speak in support of, of the letter though, when we get a chance.
Well, I think there's a chance, go for it.
You know, I very much, Mendy, I very much appreciate all the work and effort you have put into this over the years. This has been a long, long process, and uh if you don't know the properties that they're talking about, well, uh, it's actually been. A dangerous area because it's not developed. Where those manufacturing homes used to be back there in the back was always a horrible, horrible. Uh, place within the community, a lot of bad things were happening back there, and that was right next to the school. There's also trails that go in there, so safety wise, this is actually very beneficial to safety, and that's one of the reasons why the schools have been. In favor and donated the property and moved it forward. With that, I want to just little piece of history, that water wheel that's there. I actually worked to restore it back in the eighties, early eighties, but we weren't very bright. We use plywood, and if you think about it, when you use plywood and water, that's not a very good idea, but we thought we were doing something wonderful. We didn't have organizations to do it with back then, we just got down in the water and made it happen. But aside from all that, uh, having a park there in Belfer and North Mason is extremely important. We as a commission, I'm sure we all know, we don't offer a place for the kids to really uh have a playground to play. We don't have anything up there for them at all, even at Sand Hill, there's no playground. We have for, for, you know, baseball fields and the like, and at least we have a place where they can sit and have a picnic, but who wants to have a picnic at a ball field? Uh, especially just to drive up there. It's important that we provide, or at least help uh provide some of the services to the community. This is also a great economic development uh piece, not just for the tourism that would come in, but believe it or not, bathrooms are a huge economic development driver. When we put a minute to Port of Allen, we found out that people were putting it on their routes because they were able to mark where a bathroom was, and that's why they chose the routes of where to travel. And as I get older, I actually appreciate that idea a lot more than I did back when I was just a Port Commissioner, uh, uh, young and. Never thinking about all the aspects, how important having a bathroom local is. Again, this, this cleanup is a very important thing, but more than that, imagine having this ADA accessible. Park, and when we were talking originally, the idea, there was a big push for a veteran ADA as well. What a beautiful, beautiful idea. There's been a lot of work involved with it, I just want you to know, Mendy, that I'm a hundred percent supportive. And I know the community is too, because we would love to have a park where we can go and sit and drop a line. Or have a picnic, or watch our kids play on a playground. And that particular playground is spectacular, so just for one, I want you to know that I am a hundred percent supportive. And that's only because of the benefits that will bring that community, so thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner Navin.
Great, commissioners, anything else for Mendy?
Mendy, when, when do you need the, the letter of support?
So grant applications are due on May fourth, so um sometime before May fourth would be great.
Okay. I think it would be, uh, um, I'd like to see the other letters of support too, if you could forward those on to us.
Sure.
Commissioners, because of the time then, can we get it uh at least scheduled, you know, with your guys' review, get it scheduled for the next agenda? On our next regular meeting.
Uh, yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I certainly, like I said, trust Mendy to get that information back to us before the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, oh no, that'd be great.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate your time today.
Yeah, absolutely, great to see you.
Yeah, good to see you.
Mark, do you have your, I see your, your hand up, Mark.
Thanks, Commissioner, yeah, Mendy, I, I just wanted to let you know that, um, if you could have that to us by uh the twentieth, Wednesday. Is, is kind of our deadline for, for getting Mackenzie those materials, so that would be great.
Yep. No problem, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Alrighty, take care, Mendy, have a good day.
Bye, Mendy.
Okay. Next up, we have uh district court prosecutor and public defense. See, we have George, Judge Steele, I see Prosecutor Dorsey on here. And. Trying to look through my Zoom screen here, I don't know that I see Peter.
I don't see Peter.
Okay. Well, in the interest of, uh, in the interest of time, I know the court is typically busy, but uh Judge, if you maybe want to get us started and we can. Catch Peter in, in progress.
Alright, um, this morning we're not too busy, but. But here's what the situation, I do apologize in advance, I kind of got a head cold, so I hope everybody can hear me. Basically, what's going on here is last fall, the district court and the Sheldon Municipal Court together applied for a grant. To um fund um a uh individualized treatment court program. And we were awarded pretty much everything we asked for, I think, maybe shy of ten thousand dollars. And that's laid out more specific in our briefing materials. The important thing about the grant is it's there to uh provide a, an option for people. That suffer from behavioral disorders, mental health disorders, or substance abuse disorders. To them, for them to get some um help with their issues and get some additional relief if they, if they take that help. We've reached out to. And, and we also reached out to Olympic Community College to cover education issues. So we have those resources, uh, I do, I'm not one to like to, I don't like to take. Credit for things that other people worked in, a big kudos for this, quite frankly, is Judge Greer. Helped a little bit, but, but he's really done a lot of work to bring this to fruition. The situation is, the grant covers everything, um. The grant covers everything but the um. That's cost and increased uh prosecute. Your cost. It is, includes uh covers uh treatment costs and it covers interpreter costs because. What the legislation is wanted, insisted was we provide a name for people who are not English speaking to have access. To uh treatment courts such as this. And it's already up and running with the Sheldon Municipal Court. We have a meeting with the prosecutor, the county prosecutor and the head of the public defense. The Hammerout. Workable. And that, but in order to make it work, um, one thing the grant did not cover was increase. Is in the public defense budget and, and the prosecutorial budget. Uh, Mr. Dorsey's here, so he can obviously address his needs more detail, I will tell you. On the public defense side, the plan is. Based on the meeting we've had.
I'm here as well, Your Honor.
Oh, I'm sorry. So what you're saying is I don't really need to speak for it because you're more than capable of doing it yourself. I figured it sucks, but anyway, the bottom line is people worked it out. And come up with some very, you know, ways to accomplish this with fairly modest increases in the budget. As far as the court goes, we don't require anything, we already have our. A probation officer who is attending these meetings um at the treatment court session, and for two reasons, we promise we would help out. Uh, we also have expectation we're going to be joining in with them, and also, uh, for lack of a better term, she's my spy. She's reporting back how things are going, and so far they're going fairly well. Uh, what this program will do is provide people with an opportunity to get treatment that I should be able to get because it's provided for. To go in a different direction uh with their lives and maybe come out of it with something that. Is valuable to them where they don't particularly care to lose it, hence they won't be as inclined to want to be involved. In behaviors again, back in the criminal justice system. It is something that I've wanted to do for a long time, even before I became the district court judge here, I started discussing this when I was with the municipal court. started discussing this when I was with the municipal court. Our opportunities, what I'm asking to do is grant the request made, being made by the prosecutor and by the defense of the defense to so they can participate. And we can see how this goes. It is a experiment. It's always supposed to run through June thirty of two thousand twenty-three. Our expectation is, according to my conversation with Judge Greer, that the expectation is it will probably be continued. Or it's doing mostly administration of it. And that includes as Greer loves to keep statistics, so doing that. And as I said, it looks so far positive. I'm hoping the county can participate as well. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dorsey and then Mr. Jones.
Peter, unless you have something specific, I'd just wait for questions if there are any.
I have a question. Yeah, so, you know, it's funny because these things, you've heard this story before. When I first came in, I was not a big fan of these type of programs with Mason County, unlike all the things I've seen in the past in other counties, actually are successful in these programs. So it's hard to turn my nose up at it because over and over again, it proves to work here in Mason County. I, my biggest question is going to be, even if we were to grant the the supplement into the budget, which I have no problem with whatsoever. I actually think we should there. I know both of the other entities have staffing capacity issues. Can, so for Tim, Michael and Peter, can you handle the the extra need of capacity with your staffing to do this?
So I would say I I think maybe we're at a point where we have some ideas. We have.
To see him.
I'm sick tight. I'll be with you.
I told him wait downstairs.
So I I I haven't carved out the math, but it, I think, I think what's listed, I'm virtually sure what's listed for April twenty-two to December twenty-two is a prorated which makes sense. And then beyond that, looks like it's broken down just because of the review and renewal necessity of the grant to the first half of next year. And then if if it does get renewed beyond that, that's based on an hourly estimate of time. Additional time devoted to an additional court obligation divided out by the rate of the deputy prosecutor that we would have handle it. And and even that decision is based upon a restructuring of some duties to try to be able to free somebody up to do that. So I, Commissioner Nether, I appreciate your comment. It's 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 true and it's appropriate to be mindful of. We made the commitment after we were advised of the obtaining of the grant and and the and that it was, the ship was going to move forward. That if we could work together to make the program structure something that we could support from a best practice standpoint, that we would do our level best to find a way creative ways to cure the staffing and resource issues that we had identified from the inception of this conversation. And the way to do that was to try to restructure some things internally. The other option was to sort of along the lines of what public defense has planned, although it 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 falls into place, for whatever reason, quite a bit easier. Given Mr. Taschner's involvement already as the city contractor for public defense, participating in this court. There was a negotiated rate additional that he would require to perform that service for county defendants, which Peter can discuss in more detail. For us, the the similar type of option would have been to contract with the firm that is providing the services for prosecution to the city by contract, which creates some supervisory and and other legal issues with respect to my responsibility for that person directly as a lawyer supervising another lawyer. And the fact that for prosecution services, it's not an independent thing. She would be acting under my authority. And there would have to be additional legal paperwork for every case to appoint her as a special deputy for each case. And then if we were to go that route, it's two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So for the same time commitment that we estimate for the numbers we provided internally, if if that time estimate's realistic, which I think it's actually low because we didn't factor in any of my potential time or Tim Whiteheads, for example. But just for the deputy prosecutor at approximately three hours a week of time commitment, it it'd be closer to forty thousand dollars a year than than ten. So that's the long attorney way of saying, I think we've got a plan if, in fact, it goes through. That said, the funding is a difficult and sticky thing for us for how to manage because it is an additional court. It is additional duties. And yet to fund it internally that way, if it just is an increase on one side or the other from the county or treatment sales tax, if that remains or becomes an option or both, then essentially, unless we're going to overpay an attorney, which we're not, it it's a net wash. And then we're taking on a non-mandated function which is additional to our already tapped resources for nothing. And so I I we did have some conversations af, you know, offline about how to how the funding would look. But nevertheless, I think we can find a way to take on and and we've done our best to kind of capture what we anticipate the cost of taking that on would be.
Fisher, can I ask another question? Mike, on the this is, this is really jumping the shark. I I I'm going to go to a different question that may have to do with this. So what is a we've talked in the past about capacity issues within your department. We've talked about perhaps expanding the employees, the amount of employees you have. Just from my own head, what is a fully funded position on the beginning, on the low end scale in your office for an attorney?
Boy, oh, boy.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I don't need the exact, I just need a rounded up number. Was it a hundred fifteen?
I would say probably that, I mean, when you factor in the salary and benefits for a district court level attorney, that's, I, what do you think, Tim? I mean, that's or 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 Peter, or if, I don't know if Darcy was able to get on.
I I don't know your office. Your office is paid more than my people in my office do.
Yeah, there's.
Tim, does that sound pretty close? Just from my own mind.
Maybe. I I don't know. I'd have to take a look. It it sounds somewhere in that ballpark. I mean, when you, the the benefits package obviously adds a lot to it, so probably it might be a little less than that, but.
Well, I was just wondering that for myself. If we get to the point where we start, if you actually can't handle the capacity, we need to look at what that money would look like if we were to contract out. Now, if I'm looking at forty K to contract out, it makes sense to look at the bigger picture for the whole program for all, for everything, not just this program alone. That's why I threw that out. So sorry to 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 sidereless on that.
I I I can, I can get that not too, too difficult. Darcy, it looks like is working on it and says she thinks it's a little under that also. And and we'll get a number or a ballpark number here in a second. The the problem with that, though, although I understand where where you're headed, and I I like that thinking, is we have an open position that we've been unable to even get interest in for quite some time. We're having difficulty recruiting for a full-time deputy prosecutor. I I and that's part of what we looked at. Like, I'm sure that Chris Coker's firm, who does the city prosecution, they're going to have somebody in that room anyway. I'm sure they'd like to charge two people two hundred and fifty an hour for being there. But to actually hire somebody even part-time, I mean, we're having a hard enough time hiring somebody full-time to hire somebody part-time, I I don't think is very realistic, which
I meant full-time. I I didn't.
Right, no, yeah. So so
Our time attorney.
So it's it's about sixty-eight thousand, and then the benefits is probably close to thirty-five on top of that.
So it's less than a hundred K.
Thank you. So, you know, those are
Are you saying, though, that you believe you can handle capacity for this first part? Because I still, to be honest with you, I'm not sure you were saying that you could do it.
I, we would, we would get it done. We we have moved something, we have changed who's doing what enough. We have two new attorneys that have started since February. One in February, one in mid-March. And that was essentially to maintain status. I I did get worried we could keep up when we had two people leaving. But you know, barring the unforeseen, it sure be easier if we could get somebody in that we're, like we're trying to do. I I I think we could handle it. Like I said, we haven't put in any time for, like, the staffing or administrative review. It's just, just the cost of the DPA at an estimate three hours a week at what her hourly rate would be.
Lydia, are you here on?
I'm here.
I know we talked about funding and you know, if we if we increase the T S T funds and decrease the decrease the general fund portion of the the deputy salary, that's just a wash, and that's not what we're willing to do. And I know that you were going to have a conversation, or you were planning on having a conversation with Jen. Did anything materialize with that conversation?
I actually talked with Mark
Okay.
last week. We talked and you want to jump in, Mark? So we have the funding. It isn't in the budget. It would be coming from the pot. So meaning it could ultimately not be sustainable. And we were talking ten thousand, not forty. So that's a little different, but just bringing that up. So.
Ten, ten, ten is the number the the actual cost that we're estimating internally. Which is like, I don't remember what it is exactly, but, you know, it's a, it's a much less than a, so if
Six, or is that a ten for you?
Sorry, that, say it again.
That's ten for your side and then six for mine.
Right, right, exactly. Yes.
Sixteen total.
Right. So ju- just from our perspective, I just wanted to put it in perspective that if we rather than shift things around internally to try to absorb it, if we were to contract out, it it it's, it's a two hundred and fifty dollar an hour, whatever that, whatever that adds up to. I mean, it wouldn't be less than an hour. Even if they weren't doing it the way we would do. And the problem, of course, is I would be insisting on the level of attention and care and preparation that we would do. But even at two fifty an hour for one hour times, I mean, that's even thirteen thousand at two fifty an hour for just one hour a week.
That was more of an exercise of just how expensive it would be to ship it out or contract it out. That's not something we're going to do.
Right. I just, I just was putting in perspective why we decided to try our level best to kind of shift duties around within the office to try to find that, you know, extra time for a new court commitment and prep time and case review and team meetings and the stuff that goes along with running a therapeutic court.
Thank you, Lydia and Mark, for having those conversations.
Yeah, absolutely. I talked with Lydia and kind of looked back through some of the financials associated with our treatment sales tax. We've been consistently collecting more than we estimate and spending less than we estimate. So we have a fairly healthy fund balance in treatment sales tax. So I've I felt with discussions with Lydia and Jen that that they definitely can handle this additional capacity for this period of time in which they're kind of analyzing it to see if it works. As we move forward on it, if it's something that's going to become a permanent thing in place, then absolutely, we'll we'll need to take a look at that again. But from what it looks like right now, I think this is very doable.
Mr. Travis, any questions? Comments?
No, I guess comments, it sounds like I don't know how to say this nicely.
You don't got to be nice.
Sounds like more communication needed to be done within the specific parties. But it sounds like you you have things worked out. So if it's if it fits within our budget and it's doable, then I would support this.
Yeah, what the the, what I don't know, and this is where the conversation with Lydia offline got complicated because she was confused and I think not understanding that we were, her confusion is for good reason, because I'm not really sure yet how to account for it in a way that's not just a straight wash and and, you know, we've we we end up burdening staff and attorney time for something that we could already accommodate elsewhere. But that maybe is something that we can continue to discuss. And I don't know whether that should be who specifically that should be with between Lydia and maybe Jen and different folks that on the county side with people like Darcy and myself about how to, how to how to do it. Because we have a position that's basically funded partially by the county and partially, I mean, it's all by the county, but partially from current expense and partially from the treatment sales tax, which that part of it does already account for the three therapeutic courts that we that we are involved with. So additional funding, you know, there there's a balance there that if one, if one were to, if it goes from a point five F T E to a point six or seven F T E, then, like I said before, unless unless we're going to overpay an attorney, which we're not, that either is too much money in a line and we don't spend it all, or the other half of it goes down to less than a point five. At which point, with something that is experimental and may not continue beyond next year, kind of messes up our funding. So so I'd like to talk about whether or not there's a place within the mental health budget or our, you know, our arrangement with the mental health department dealing with the treatment sales tax money to have an additional line. Just until we see how it goes and how sustainable it is.
Fisher, that brings up my question because I'm a little, a little clarification. I, this is the district court needed no budget increase, but we needed to increase the budgets of the prosecutor by seventy-three eighty this year. And the public defense by forty-five hundred this year. That's the way I read it. Am I mistaken?
No, I think you're accurate. And I I think that speaks to well, one of, one of two issues. One is either it wasn't thought of when the grant was applied for. Because there wasn't, you know, the level of conversation that we needed at the onset of this to get the prosecutor and public defender's office involved in a way that 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 could have contributed to the development of this program. Or it just wasn't something that was an allowable you know, funding request in the grant itself. And I'm not sure if that's the case, Judge, do you know if this is just, these aren't allowable costs in the grant, broadly speaking? Or is it just something that wasn't included in our request since it was driven by the city?
My understanding is these were costs that were not included in the grant in total. I mean, overall. They were focused on the program issues. So so what we've attempted to do, I think all of us have tried to keep the increase really modest, you know, hopefully manageable, manageable way. Everything else is covered for. We have a person already in place who's administering the program. Who's basically on any payroll, but he'll be based on the ground, be working on county cases as well as soon as they start being sent down there. The treatment's already provided for. Work time and all that, Judge Greer and I have an arrangement when he's here in county cases. work time and all that. The Judge Greer and I have an arrangement that when he's here in county cases, he's a Judge Pro Tem, which he already is of this county anyway. Uh, the days when I go down there to hear these types of cases, I'll be a Judge Pro Tem for the city. And there won't be any exchange station back and forth when we're the other there. So really our covering the cost of increased public events and increase, um, prosecutorial, uh, needs as well.
Um, Mark, I see that your hand's up. I just want to make one quick comment before, if you don't mind. Um, you know, I, I think my long-term concern is, is not the, the funding in the, in the lifetime of this grant. Because as it's been already said, I think we do have the capacity to cover these, these funding items. Um, my long-term concern is funding a direct competitor to our current therapeutic courts that have been developed over, uh, years and years, uh, of effort jointly um, between the courts, public defense and prosecutor and, and community partners as well. And so I want us to be mindful of that as, as we move through this process. I understand that, um, this is a great opportunity for the city to uh, engage with, uh, you know, offenders, uh, in the city. Um, but if there are tweaks that we need to make to our own therapeutic court, uh, offerings, you know, I, I would prefer to have that conversation over, uh, how we funded a direct competitor, um, in terms of, uh, getting people services that they need as they go through the district court as well. So, uh, Mark.
No, before Mark, I, if you don't mind, Commissioner, uh, that you just made an extremely powerful and important point and I'd like to make sure that we, because I hadn't looked at it from that aspect, uh, I would like to make sure we get that first and foremost figured out and, and protected. I don't, I definitely don't want to take something that's extremely successful and put something in competition with it. I hadn't thought of it from that standpoint. So can we please look at that a little deeper?
Well, and I think it would be, you know, Commissioner, I, I, you know, I think what needs to happen, and obviously not today, um, but certainly on the shorter end of, uh, of the timeline is, uh, let's bring Renee in. Uh, let's bring, you know, let's bring our therapeutic court folks into this conversation. I, you know, I've been able to participate in some conversations between district court and, uh, prosecutor and, and public defender's office. And, you know, it seems like the conversations, including Renee and, and therapeutic courts has been, has been limited. And so um, I think sooner rather than later, we need to get them engaged on this and the program as a whole. Uh, you know, sitting on the county's housing and behavioral health advisory board, um, you know, we look at that data and we look at that funding uh, annually as that group makes recommendations to the commission, commission around budget time on, um, you know, what and how to fund the programs that we already have in-house. And so, um, you know, if the, if the will of the, of the, the group is to move in a direction where we're, you know, adding this offering with the city, you know, let's have that conversation, but I don't think it would be appropriate to have that conversation without including our own therapeutic courts in it.
Where my, my, uh, comment was directed as well. I think that there were people not included in, in full conversation of this and that, that's concerning.
Mark, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, from a, from an accounting perspective, I think it's, uh, a, a little bit different for public defense as well as prosecutor's office. So Peter's going to have to have increased costs associated with an external attorney that he employs. Um, so those costs are actually going to be in addition to, um, what he already spends with them. Uh, whereas the prosecutor's office is, would, my understanding be tracking the time that they are spending on these cases, uh, requesting reimbursement from treatment sales tax. And so that would basically be money being transferred from treatment sales tax to the general fund to cover those costs. Uh, ultimately, I think in the end, for the prosecutor's office, it may be a reduction in the total cost of, uh, to, to the general fund. Uh, whereas in the public defense office, these are monies that actually would be going to an external party. So it's additional costs that, uh, he does not have the capacity in his budget handle now.
The budget supplemental for one, uh, budget realignment maybe for the other. Is that what you're saying?
No, I think it's all, Commissioner Netherton, it's all coming out of treatment sales tax. So we would need to increase the budget authority in treatment sales tax to cover these costs. Um, and then, and then obviously, um, for the public defense side, we would need to increase his budget accordingly. Uh, associated with the money that would come in to cover the additional costs he'd be paying external attorney. I, I think prosecutor's office, it's more a reimbursement uh, of, of, uh, position that we would normally be funding out of general fund or, or other therapeutic courts, I think.
So Commissioner Shudy, I'll, I'll just say I am supportive of moving, uh, forward as long as we take the precautions necessary to make sure that they are not in competition, but that they help each other and support each other. Uh, but the financial aspect I'm, I'm comfortable with.
Great. Commissioner Trask?
Yeah, I would agree with that as well and just ask that in the future if there's other players in the pot, that they be included in all the communications.
Yeah, I will, um, I'll go along with the commissioners and, and support this as well. I don't think there's really much of a choice. I think, I think we were encumbered. Um, before the, the program was baked, um, and so fortunately the dollar amount is, is low. At this point, and so I think we can swing it, but definitely need to make sure that we're all communicating with everybody throughout the rest of this grant. And, and if there is a renewal of the grant, uh, that we learn from how this initial implementation went. And Commissioners, were you wanting to hear on the idea of, of the other therapeutic courts? How, how are we gonna go about with Commissioner Netherton's congestion?
Actually, I'm hoping that, that we actually put it together and get it written down before we get too much deeper. I think that should be a top priority. And I don't want to take credit for any of that. It was the, the term that Commissioner Shudy, uh, used and your head shaking that set me into a a precautionary mode. That, uh, term of, uh, competition was, just caught me off guard. Uh, and if that is the possibility, we definitely, I think we have to have that first and foremost fixed.
I, I'm not sure as of right now that there are any people served by this court that would not be able to be served by our current courts. And so. So Commissioners, maybe this is a, an opportunity for us to ask Mark to try to convene, um, put a little bit of detail around that conversation and convene the proper folks and get that conversation started, uh, the next few weeks.
Please.
That's a great idea. And I'm really, um, glad that Mark and Lydia spoke and worked on that. So thank you both for doing that.
Great.
So in, in previous, Commissioner, sorry to interrupt you, but, uh, in previous discussions that I've had, um, with, with all the parties involved here from a, from the legal side of this, I thought my understanding was that this is a different type of therapeutic court, so that the individuals that are actually going through this court would not be eligible for our other courts. Is that an incorrect assumption?
Yes. I, I think that's an incorrect assumption, although you know, that, that's been one of.
Modification that needs to be made to drug court.
Correct. Which I think we have the capacity to do, um, and that is drug court from its inception was a felony drug court. Um, and given significant legal and policy and other changes, um, since we're talking about a handful of, I, I, I can say this much from our standpoint, there's very, there's over the years since we started mental health court and veterans court, which are open to district court defendants. Um, there's been very little, and I, and I think I have some ideas about why, and I might not be right, uh, more that it might be more, more involved than I think, but the, the reality is we have very little um, application from district court defendants to enter those carts that are open to district court defendants. Um, cause the two of the three mental health, two, excuse me, two of the three therapeutic courts that we run are open for entry to people who are charged in district court with non-felonies. Um, and from it's, since throughout our conversations about this new court, it's been represented that we're talking about just a few people, um, that would be, have capacity for in this new court. Um, with their, with veterans court and mental health court already being open to those individuals. Um, the programmatic willingness to, and it would take some, and those discussions have started, uh, but it, it would take, it would take a determination by the stakeholders in that program to change, to allow non-felonies to enter. Uh, but I think there's really good reasons to do it and there's capacity to do it, I think. Um, and at that point, we could probably serve the exact same population with our current courts. And that's, that's been one of our positions from the beginning. And I don't think Peter disagrees, and I would like to hear though from people like Renee, um, it's, it's uh, or, or others. I, I think there's a new Sam and I don't like calling him the new Sam, him or her, the new Sam. There's a person who, what's that?
Jeremiah Wilder.
Yeah. So I, I mean, between Renee and Jeremiah, then it, it would be interesting, I think, to hear their perspective. Cause I don't know for sure that they would agree with me on that, but, um, I, I think Peter and I are, are of one mind in that opinion.
We are. All right. So it sounds like we need some additional discussion on that and maybe Patsy can help me, um, find some time for the judge to, to meet with, uh, Mr. Dorsey and Mr. Jones.
I mean, meetings, we'll continue to do so as long as we move forward.
Great. Okay. Thanks, everybody.
I'll reach out to you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Next up, we have, uh, we're a little bit, uh, running a little bit behind here, but we do have an interview with, uh, Board of Equalization candidate, uh, David Mallory. David, are you on the line? I see you there.
I sure am. Thanks very much.
We bet. Appreciate your, uh, your patience with us this morning, uh, as we got a little bit off calendar here. Um, but we'll go ahead and, and dive right into the, uh, interview. Uh, David, so what we do is we have, uh, we have about six questions here. Uh, Commissioners will go through each other question kind of around Robin's style. Uh, and then, um, you'll be able to provide your, your answers to them. No right or wrong answer, just, uh, just pretty, you know, uh, pretty broad questions, trying to get some of your thoughts on them. Uh, so we'll begin with, uh, Commissioner Trask, Commissioner Netherton, and then I'll take, uh, the third question and so on and so forth.
Morning, David. Thank you for joining us.
You bet.
So what do you see as the function of the Board of Equalization?
Well, I read up on it a little bit and, uh, I see it as being a part of a team that helps, you know, provide dispute resolution to those, uh, parties out in the community that, that have issue with, uh, their taxation on their real or personal property.
David, thank you for applying. Uh, we always appreciate the citizens stepping up to do these things. Uh, why do you want to sit on the Board of Equalization?
Well, I think some of my primary, um, reasons would be that I'm, I'll be, I'm relatively new to the community. We'll have been here two years, uh, this July. And I, I'm very much interested, um, in learning more about the community. And I would look at this as one way to do that from the internal, uh, workings of the community to better understand how the different, uh, you know, levers and, and parts of the community work and specifically also the growth of the community and what direction and leadership it has. So I, I'm very interested in that. And I, I have been retired since fall of twenty nineteen and wanted to get back, um, at least part-time into some form of, uh, professional, uh, endeavor.
Uh, David, this position has a three-year term. Uh, the board typically meets two days a week, uh, Tuesdays and Thursdays for a series of weeks, mainly February through July, depending on the number of petitions. Uh, the board may be reconvened at other times of the year. How will you meet that obligation?
I don't see any challenge to that obligation. Um, I think the only thing I would have to do is I have a commitment right now, um, working for the Pioneer Food Bank, which, uh, takes some of my time on, uh, the third Thursday of every month. So I would probably need to move that commitment to, uh, Friday instead of Thursday. But other than that, I, I don't see a real issue.
Great. Thank you, David. Um, there's required training from the Department of Revenue that's held either out of the county or via Zoom, and that's in June of each year and it's paid by the county. Do you have any problems with, um, attending this training?
Not at all.
Do you happen to have any, uh, conflicts of interest that could arise by serving on the commission? We need to know about.
You know, on my application, uh, the only conflict that I can see is that um, our current property now is part of a, um, small H O A. Um, so I, I could see where that could be viewed as a potential conflict of interest. There's ten properties within that H O A.
Yeah.
Uh, David, just a F Y I, um, there's a one hundred dollar per day, per, uh, one hundred dollar per day per D M, uh, to pay the Board of Equalization members on days that they're meeting. Um, given everything that we went through, um, our last question for you is simply, do you have any questions for us?
I do have a couple, if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, who, who does, who does this position report to?
At the staff level or?
Um, yeah, at the staff level, yeah.
Yeah. So we have a clerk for the Board of Equalization, Becky Rogers. Um, that would be your primary, your primary point of contact.
Okay. Um, and I'm wondering about the, um, office environment, um, more the physical office environment for this um, particular position or group of people that meet. Are, are we, are we meeting in a conference room? Is it a, is it an office? How, could you kind of just top level go over that?
Yeah, it is a, uh, it is, I would, I would say it's a conference room attached to a set of offices. It has, the Board of Equalization has its own um, space, uh, in a county facility.
Do the, do the members of this board, do they actually, um, uh, are they required to go to the, uh, in-person disputes that come about? Um, you know, when they're elevated to that level?
Uh, that I'm not, that I'm not sure. Commissioner Netherton, do you have any experience with that or?
What, what, what do you mean by in-person disputes?
Well, it's my understanding that once the disputes come in and they're, they're dealt with at the board, if the, you know, uh, community members still want to dispute that further, they go to an in-person meeting. And I'm wondering if, uh, or at least that's my assumption or understanding. Maybe that's incorrect. I'm not sure, but if that is correct, I was wondering if these board members are, are required to represent at those meetings as well.
I think I am sure you're saying, from what I understand, I don't believe so. They have, uh, uh, that's taken at a different level at the state level, those type of appeals. Uh, and the staff would be the ones that represent them, uh, and usually the minutes and the, the discussions that came from it. I'm not saying that it's not possible, but I've just never seen it as a requirement.
Okay.
Miss, well, uh, that's just my interpretation, uh, Commissioner Trask, or anybody else have any different interpretation of what they've seen?
Yeah, you know, I think that's an excellent question. Um, I honestly, I don't have the answer to that. Diane?
Diane? Um, Commissioner Netherton is, yeah, he's correct. If somebody wants to appeal the Board of Equalization determination, it goes to the State Board of Appeals.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the only other question I think at this time would be, uh, you mentioned, uh, they come in, uh, Tuesday through Thursday, and I believe you said January through July. Is that accurate?
Uh, February through July.
February through July. Is there a certain amount of hours during, for each day? Or is it pretty much determined based on the activity load that, that's coming in?
I'll, I'll grab that one. I think from, from my understanding, because, um, many times because it's, right now it's kind of a, you know, and it probably will be in the future, I'm assuming, um, it will be a hybrid, but they're on the opposite side of my wall right here. So I can hear them every now and then. Um, they, they're pretty active, but I think it depends on how many appeals there are.
Okay. So it could vary, I'm assuming, throughout the course of that time?
That's my assumption as well.
Okay. Um, I, I think that that's all I have at this time. I really appreciate it.
Great. Thanks, David. Uh, well, we will, uh, we'll be back in touch with you when we, uh, make a decision on appointment.
Okay. Thanks again.
Thanks so much.
Bye.
Uh, Commissioners, do we want to discuss now or save for Commissioner discussion and keep moving through the set agenda?
I'm comfortable with moving it forward. Uh, if we wanted to discuss more, then we can move it at the end of the agenda.
Yeah, no, just reviewing and, and listening to him, him speak. Um, great questions, by the way. Um, I'm comfortable with moving him forward as well.
Okay, I am as well. So, uh, Diane, we'll go ahead and appoint Mr. Mallory to the Board of Equalization.
Okay, we'll put it on the April 26th agenda. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, uh, next up, we'll move into Jim Madison from, uh, Juvenile Court Services or with, uh, presenting on Juvenile Court Services.
Yeah. Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. So I'm, uh, coming to you guys this morning with a, uh, grant opportunity, uh, that we have. Um, we, uh, over in our detention center, we have a fingerprinting machine that uses the, uh, cross-match live scan system. And, uh, it's a great system, but unfortunately it uses Microsoft, uh, uh, as its operating system and it's out of compliance now and, and we have to be in compliance with the, uh, FBI, uh, to be able to submit those, uh, fingerprints. And so, um, it's been over a year now that I applied, uh, for the NCHIP grant, which is the National Criminal History Improvement Program, uh, through the, uh, US Department of Justice. And, uh, that's handled, uh, in our state by the State Patrol. And so, uh, I did hear last week that, uh, we would be awarded these funds. Um, and so I thought I'd come to you guys and, and talk to you about this. And so it's about, uh, $8,014 for all the equipment to get replaced in detention. And this grant would cover all that, but it does require a 10% match, which is, uh, $802, uh, out of the detention budget, which, uh, we would be able to cover. And so, uh, I just asked that, uh, uh, we'd be able to move this forward and put it on the action agenda so we can get our system replaced.
I'm supportive of Commissioner.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Trask.
Yeah, absolutely. I want to thank you for reaching out to, um, Tim Whitehead to make sure that everything was perfect.
Absolutely.
Excellent. I'm supportive as well. Thanks, Jim.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Great. Uh, moving on to our support services briefing, uh, Mark, you want to go ahead? Hey, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, first up, we got Diane talking about public records request logs.
Morning. In response to Commissioner Shute's request to have the public records log available on the website. James worked with GovQA, which is the software that we use. So there is now a public, what do we call it? A public records request archive. And if you go on there, you'll see the log of the requests that have come in. It doesn't include the sheriff's office because a lot of theirs, when they come in, they have, um, information that has to be redacted. But someone could always request that log directly to the sheriff's office. And if you go on there, you can then see all the different requests. And if you, if a requestor wants to see what was actually, actually provided, then they would need to just submit that number as a public records requested, it would be provided. Any questions on that?
Uh, no questions. Just, uh, really appreciate James turning that around so quickly. Um, I think he did a fantastic job and I know he worked with, uh, Tim Whitehead and, uh, was able to get this up and running. Excellent work.
Yes, thank you. And then my next item, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Um, James showed it to me. It's pretty cool. I, I.
Yeah, it is.
We'll take a look at it.
Yes. And James is working with the officers so that they know at the end, when they process a request, then they have to just click a couple of buttons so that it then gets posted to that log that will show online. And then he's keeping track to make sure it's current and everything.
Right. And Diane, is, this is the, the program that we approved earlier in the year, right?
Yes, GovQA. Yes.
Thank you.
And then my next item is just, um, the update to the Oakland Public Meetings Act, which I know I've provided information, but when Mark and I were looking at our agendas, um, to be in compliance, we will be removing the language on there that references COVID-19. Because one of the, we always allow public comment at our Tuesday meetings when the board takes action. And now it will become law that if there's going to be action, we must take that comment. So the only change we'll need to make is to reference that the different, um, options are available only during COVID-19, cause they will now just be available. But otherwise, everything we're in compliance with.
One question with that that I had is, uh, because of this new law, does that mean that everything that is sent in must be read into the record? Or do they still have to request it be read into the record?
It doesn't. I didn't read anything about having to read it into the record. So then I would say we would refer to our correspondence policy, which does say that they have to ask that it be read into the record. But we would always, if we receive the written comment ahead of time, we do log that in. So that would become part of our record.
And that question was brought up at some of our, um, the all-county meetings. And that's what they, they agree with that as well. It's only if it's requested.
Okay. And then I do have a question. It's been brought up, I know, by Commissioner Shute to schedule the six-month evaluation for the administrator. I didn't know if the board wanted to schedule that.
I, uh, I think my position's known.
I'd say, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Keep that man accountable.
Commissioner Netherland, you're good. Okay.
That's what we all agreed when we started this thing, that it would be the six-month.
So we'll schedule that on a briefing date. It'll be a, um, executive session. And then I just wanted to let the board know that I did hear, um, the Squaxon Island Tribe, um, assistant last week, and she's reaching out to find a mutual time to have a joint meeting. So I'm not sure when it might be. I gave her basically the schedule that would work for this office. And then she said it could be a few months before she actually gets a date together, but I wanted to let you know that we are working on that.
Awesome.
Great.
Thank you.
Just looking for John. There you are.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, we'd like to this morning brief you on the RCO grant, the Recreation and Conservation Grant. We're putting in for, for both, uh, Sam, Sand Hill and Union on the total costs and what the county's, uh, estimated match will be. Uh, on the two grants that we're applying for with Sand Hill, the total of those grants, if we get the maximum amount awarded, will be, uh, $850,000. We deduct that from the total that's been estimated of the, uh, the cost, which is 5,153,000. We'll leave the county's requirement of $4,303,000. What I'd also, uh, like to share with you, which we just got in this weekend, which is the estimated annual costs. If the grant is approved and, and the, uh, estimation of the, uh, total renovation of the park will be, uh, right now it's estimated to be at, sorry, pulled up the wrong truck, between, uh, 43,326 at the top end per year and $35,448 at the bottom end. So it could be anywhere annually between those two figures. And that's based on the current estimations. Any questions about Sand Hill?
I don't have a question as much as a comment. Uh, Commissioner Shute, are you okay if I?
Yep.
Good work. Uh, we all know I want this very, 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 very badly. Uh, but I always try to be as fair as I possibly can with the county as a whole. Uh, and although I honestly believe that North Mason has been shortchanged for many, many years. And again, I want this badly. I cannot remember us ever doing the project like this with a great, with an amount that much with so small a grant. And again, I'm, I want this badly. And I think we could probably afford to do it, but I know that that will eat up a lot without, uh, more matching. I just wanted to hear what the other commissioners thought. Uh, I know you haven't been here as long as I have, but, or maybe even Diane. Diane, can you remember us doing a project this big with, uh, so small amount of grant?
Um, no, not, not for parks. No. But into, I mean, and as you said, we, um, Jen and Mark did work on the REIT II budget, which is included showing that yes, it can happen with using, you know, REIT II, and of course too, you can always commit general fund to it. But yeah, it will certainly use up a large amount of that fund.
And again, I want this badly. I'm just trying to be as fair as I possibly can, cause I just don't remember us doing that, uh. You know, we've spent that money on, on the MCRA and stuff like that in the past, but there is usually a great grant opportunities is why we took advantage of the timing.
So I guess maybe just a couple of questions. One, would there be opportunities to get that lowered with future grant? Uh, offerings and, you know, down the road, number one. Number two, what would then get bumped, uh, from our parks project list? Um, if we were to commit this, I know I, I, I'm supportive of it. I think we have to make these investments. I know there's a, there's a sentiment out there that, you know, North Mason, you know, gets ignored and not thought about. And I think this is a great way to put our money where our mouth is, um, and make those investments. And so I'm a hundred percent in on that. But, you know, maybe providing some context on what, what the opportunity cost of this project is, um, would be helpful as well as, you know, again, just, would there be future funding opportunities that we could go forward on? Um, that would help buy down that cost to the county portion of it.
I mean, I can say I don't know of any grants right now available, but I know that we would certainly be looking for those. And I know that John will be looking for those.
Yeah, I guess just like, like, you know, just thinking, could we get another bite at the RCO grant? You know, in future biennium, would, you know, what's the precedence for them putting more into a project they've already funded?
In the current, uh, grant environment, traditionally when the grant closes, there's no way to write another grant to fund something that's already been completed. So it traditionally doesn't work that way, but it doesn't mean it won't in the future. But as it sits right now, it does not.
Okay.
What, what, what was your timeline on when it would start if we were to begin?
2024 is what we're looking at.
So that should give us another shot at a grant opportunity.
Yes, Commissioner, it, it absolutely does. And it's far enough into the future that we could do some estimations on what that would look like. Um, they traditionally don't go year to year. So we're about two years, probably a little over two years out. By the time they award the grant, and then we can look at where our funding is and what our expectations in the future for, uh, raising revenue.
I also wonder if we can reach out to the legislature to see if there's other funds that we might, um, be able to apply for. So we could have maybe Deb take a look at those also, um, our lobbyists. Something, and then I've got other questions too. So as far as the, the maintenance on, I know synthetic, well, synthetic lasts a lot longer than, um, grass that we mow. What's the replacement cost?
Um, I, I don't have those figures in here, but they traditionally go from 10 to 12 years. Uh, the interesting part is if we cut on the maintenance, of course, they'll last less, not as long. So this is based on putting in the appropriate maintenance to keep it up.
Okay.
Um, and then have you done any analysis about what would, will potentially fall off of our parks project list in the next five, 10 years because of this?
To be honest, sir, I have not, but that's something I can do and bring forward to you.
Okay.
And I will say, when we looked at the REIT II fund, we did still budget in there money for parks, equipment and some capital improvements. We put it down to like, I think a hundred and 50,000, when we've been putting like 250,000. But we know just this last winter, we did two restroom projects. And I don't think we spent probably over 40, 50 grand for both of them. So we were mindful of there will be ongoing maintenance at other parks. And of course we'll have to, you know, keep, continue to keep our capital equipment up to date. So that is included in when we projected the budget.
Okay. Questions? Anything else?
And then if, sorry.
Okay, go ahead, John.
And then if I can, I'd like to brief you on the Union Park. Uh, there's one grant that goes with that one and the total of that one is 500,000. The estimated total cost for the park renovations is 1,849,000. Deducting the 500,000 would be 1,349,000 as a match amount for the county itself. And then the maintenance costs, uh, annually would be between 33,957 and 37,353.
I'm supportive of moving forward with that one, Commissioner. This area has get, received the least in the 10 years I've been here. We definitely have to invest there.
So is it, is, is based on your analysis, John, um, we can do both of these within?
Yes, and Diane and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, with estimation of where the funding would come from, yes. And we did not talk about having to remove anything of future, uh, thoughts within expanding other parks, other than looking for more grants. So we, we, we put in the equipment pieces as we saw them needing to be replaced and still being able to fund these two projects.
Okay. Commissioner Trask?
Yeah, I, I'd like to, to move forward on both, you know, applying for these, cause that's essentially what we're doing, correct, is just applying for the grants?
Yes, in the letter, uh, we're on the same schedule as a Sweetwater Creek. So the end of the month, we'll have a resolution on the agenda that commits the county to the application process.
Okay. I, I would support moving forward, but I, I think we could, we could, um, continue our conversations about the, how to pay for the county cost.
Thanks. Mark, I see your hand up.
Thank you, sir. Uh, just kind of calling to attention the budget that, uh, Jen and I worked on for REIT II. Uh, that's where this funding would come from. Uh, we made some assumptions. And so we are assuming that, um, you know, current revenue estimates for 2022 in the budget and the approved budget was about 1.5 million. We look like we're on track, uh, so far this year. Uh, but that's assuming that, that we continue to see activity in the real estate market as we go out into the future. So just wanted to call your attention to the increased revenue estimates up to 2 million, which is about 137,000 less than last year. Uh, and then there is a 2% revenue growth rate per year. So I feel pretty comfortable with that as long as we don't see any huge changes in the market. Uh, but that definitely would be something that we would have to monitor. Um, we also made some adjustments on the expenditure side based on information that we had received, uh, that they didn't think they'd be spending as much as, as they had originally projected. So obviously that helps us grow our fund balance that we would be utilizing to pay for these. Uh, but you can see that, you know, we're talking about, gosh, you know, together 5.8 million, uh, and that, that dollar amount is, um, is pretty, it's, 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 it's an aggressive use of, of REIT II.
Again, just for the record, I, I love both projects and I, I definitely think if we had to prioritize the one to hit, uh, Again, just for the record, I I love both projects, and I I definitely think if we had to prioritize the one to hit uh. The other district, just because literally they've gotten the least amount, and we need to always make sure that we take care of. All three districts, and you already know that uh that that there's a prioritization there. Also, that has a larger amount of grant uh percentage. Uh, I am completely in favor. I just was again uncomfortable because in the past we go for grants for. Uh, watering uh or even when we did grants for the ball field that North Mason. To uh for the school district, even though they paid the district paper, we were able to get fifty percent match. Uh, that's just one of the things I've been used to in the past, and that's the reason why I. I'm just nervous when I see a big number like that without, you know, a larger match. I've we've just never done that before, but again, I understand we have to do things. We have to move forward. Um, I just hope we find some granting to offset some of this.
All good, or do you need anything else from us on those items?
That's it, sir. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
T J, are you here?
Yes, I am. Okay. Good morning. Um, so a couple of weeks back, Mark and I had the opportunity to go out and meet with uh P U D. Regarding interlocal agreements to provide a redundant internet service to the county. At both our downtown and public works locations. Um, this service would allow if we had a failure of our primary internet to maintain some internet connectivity. Uh, there would be some loss of service from normal activity, but uh. At least we would be able to reach the internet and still continue some business function. Um, by having the a dual internet at both locations, it would allow us to reroute. Some traffic and optimize it. Um, and protect our singular link to public works. So if that link went down, we would have another way to get to public works so they continue to function as normal. Um, so all in all, this is would be a net positive. Uh, it brings our network up to where. We have some redundancy and we can optimize the flow of the traffic across our network. Um, it is a five year um I L A. It looks as though reading the draft proposal that uh we'd be paying all costs upfront. Um, which is fifty four hundred dollars. And then we have all the hardware in place. We do need a little bit of licensing and some, you know, miscellaneous connectors at a cost of about fifteen hundred dollars. Um, so is our hope that we can approve this I L A and move forward with it.
Supportive.
Oh, I I think it's a it's a great idea, and I think it's it's been needed with. Public Works being our hub for emergency management. I think that it's critical that we have an an alternate. Or an additional way to to provide service. So great job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely supportive. Great work, T J. Great work, Mark. Um. Appreciate the service that we do get from Hood Canal, but this is a a good backup uh redundancy. Plan for continuity government. So, good job.
Yeah, thank you. And while I have you, I wanted to cover a couple of quick stats that you might find interesting with uh. You know, just about a month ago, we were able to upgrade our firewall and we're able to upgrade our uh email. Um spam filter as well as our endpoint protection. Um. Looking at thirty day totals, our firewall has blocked well over a half million hits against our network. Um, so it's doing what it needs to be doing. It's doing a good job of it. Um, and we have blocked in a thirty day period just over a hundred and five thousand. Bad malicious emails. Um, and those are all evaluated and and quarantined depending on their severity, so. Um, I'm I'm happy to see everything's working correctly and we're we're getting on top of everything.
Fantastic work.
Wow, that's incredible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank thank all your people for us.
Will do.
Great.
So our next item on our agenda here is to talk a little bit about um uh the ARPA funds. So if the commission remembers, a few months ago, we received a request from the Port of Allen. To install a new well. Uh, at that time, we uh they had also requested money from the legislature. And uh, we at that time said, hey, let's wait and see what the ledge does. Uh, so the ledge did come through with four hundred thousand of the five hundred thousand dollar request. Um, so there's a hundred thousand dollars remaining that the Port of Allen is asking us to utilize from our twenty twenty one. Funds that we received.
Okay, um, I guess two two quick things. One, um. Do we know what they requested from the legislature, the total amount they requested?
You know, I believe that they asked for for um. Yeah, I've I've seen it in two different places, Commissioner, so I'm not I'm not positive about that. I saw that they had asked five hundred thousand. Uh, but then I saw four hundred thousand in other in other requests, so. Um, I do think that I actually sat down and and talked with the director of the port of of Allen. Uh, and he did confirm with me that the total project cost is about five hundred thousand dollars. It's ready to move forward. Um, they are excited about utilizing money that they receive from the state. And this is this is what they need um to to close out the rest of the costs.
Great, and then um I just. Think that this would be now, commissioners, if you agree. Uh, the use of the questionnaire that was presented a couple of weeks ago to us that since it wasn't funded in the. Uh, last round that we're going to move forward using the questionnaire, so that would be my only request.
I think that's what we all agreed to in the past. Uh, you know, interesting enough, I want to point out that normally. It wouldn't, this request wouldn't come here, the it would go through for the oh nine funds. So there are two different places we could do this if we were to do it. I'm supportive of it, but. Again, as Commissioner Shudy said, we have an agreement that from that point forward, we would use those those forms, and I think it's. Important that we continue to uh follow what we had. How we had designed it.
No, I I would I would agree. Um, have them fill out the questionnaire and then also um. Help people understand that this is, we don't give. Them a check for a hundred thousand dollars. It's reimbursement.
That is correct. So this one was a little bit different, Commissioners, um, in that it was a request that came through the twenty twenty one process. Was just still alive, so that's why we did not send the questionnaire out. Questionnaire really in 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 my mind was directed at the um. Next disbursement that we received of the ARPA funds in June of twenty twenty two. Uh, but we definitely can can use them as a guinea pig and and send them our questionnaire and and have them respond to that.
I thought we didn't have capacity left in the. In this one, we have possible capacity, but we actually have designated out. And uh, it's already at the the amount at the limit. Matter of fact, we were five thousand short. Uh, so to designate out another hundred thousand without something coming in. Could be problematic.
Yeah, and I guess I would add to that. My understanding was that um. You know, for everything else that wasn't funded out of that first six and a half million, six point four nine million, whatever it is. Um, that the expectation was that those projects would have to be reapplied for. Through the new process in the in the second round of funding.
Not a problem. We can do that. Any other questions on the Port of Allen request?
For me, Commissioners, good, okay.
Um, so my next item that I'm bringing before you is an update to our um take home vehicle assessment. So uh, Public Works actually um was successful in convincing. Um, one of our employees to to move into a supervisory role. Um. And this is uh, this is an update to our our take home vehicle list. So Roy Byerly would actually be um added to that list.
Uncomfortable. And as well. Great.
Alright, so we'll place that on the April twenty sixth agenda. And I believe that is.
Okay, Commissioners, anything for Mark, or do we want to head right into community services? Okay, Dave?
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. So uh, first thing on our ten today is a continuation of the long running discussion on. House Bill eleven fifty two, the reorganization of uh local boards of health. So I have submitted um. A change to our code. The idea on this is we'll change the code to align with um hospital eleven fifty two. In a broad way, so what this does is it um. Creates. Three positions essentially, so you have elected uh officials, three county, one city. You have two American Indian tribe positions, and we have three. Segments that are also filled. Uh, this creates one new segment, and that's for um underserved users. It also has health and uh public health users. So we've added that third section, and the way it will work is if. Once this is in, we're not going to assign. You know, so our current board of chair fills this. We're gonna do that in code. We're gonna do that in the minutes of the Board of Health meeting. So the codes will be broad. And then we'll specifically dive down in the Board of Health minutes. So this, I think, fulfills all those requirements. It's been through the Board of Health. Um, they liked it. I um I think this uh meets what we need and gives us some flexibility going in the future.
Commissioners, any any comments or feedback for Dave?
No, I think it it looks great. I know when we were testifying and fighting. The legislature during that process, what a what a road show that was. But um, I think I kept telling them that Mason County, you should look at our Board of Health. Because our Board of Health had everything necessary um for a good Board of Health to to uh. To run. We had the resources, we had the people. So again, Mason County comes out shining. And in um, I think Dave, by tweaking what was tweaked, it's perfect. Um, quite the process.
Great, Commissioner Nolan, anything? Okay, yeah, supportive as well.
We'll put that on the next action agenda. Uh, and then our next thing, I would like to introduce Melissa Casey, who is our incoming community health manager. And she's going to be presenting on Cascade Pacific Action Alliance uh contract amendment.
Morning Commissioners. For this new opportunity. Thank you. Um, today we have just a contract renewal of our Medicaid transformation project, our contract with Cascade Pacific Action Alliance. Which is just, it's essentially what funds a key component of our opioid response. Our substance abuse mobile outreach. So um, we just are asking to move that to the April twenty sixth action agenda for approval.
Supportive.
Absolutely, and and we're gonna miss Lydia. Uh, I wish you all too.
Melissa, welcome.
Yeah, and I'm supportive as well, and congratulations. I look forward to working with you in your new role.
Yeah, I look forward to it as well.
Okay, Commissioners, that is all I have on our agenda.
Okay, Commissioners, anything for Dave or his team?
Um, Dave, can you help get the pollen out of the trees? Good.
So actually, you know, I have been carrying around uh test kits in my car because people. Are having trouble determining whether they have allergies or whether it's uh COVID. Yeah, so there's a lot of pollen out there. There's a lot of people with runny, runny eyes. There's also some bronchitis running racers. All kinds of things to take into account. Uh, we are seeing an uptick uh across the state in uh the new variant, which is the B A. Uh, two. And now we got two more coming on behind that, B A two point one two and B A two point one two one. So um, more to follow, uh, our our rates. Um, our infection rate has gone up above one, and we were down to point six, which was good news, but now we're back up to. Uh, a positive increase in infection rate, so we'll see what happens here in the near future.
So just for a little bit of extra knowledge, for the first time in recent history that anybody could remember. Uh, Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority actually sent staff out because of complaints of specific uh. Uh debris and stuff uh landing in areas uh to where when they went out there. They ended up have to test it because they went through the whole process, but it was the pollen. But because it was so bad, it actually went through a process at Orca. They had never done that before. Uh, also, I'd like to remind you, David, you were gonna make arrangements to. Bring Orca in for a special uh educational briefing for the Board of Health. And uh, in regards to asbestos for your staff.
Okay.
If you don't mind getting a hold of Jeff down there.
Yeah, no problem.
With our calendar.
Okay, anything else? Before we cut him loose. Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to uh Public Works.
Morning.
Good morning.
Let's see, video, let's get that going. Um, Commissioners, if it's alright with you, whoops, wow, I don't know if the video is helping. Like to start with the Title Six report because that hopefully will be a fairly quick item. And Romance Hill may take a little bit more discussion. Okay, plan Commissioners?
Good.
Alright. Okay, so um Title Six, this is an annual report that we submit to ensure compliance. And each year there are slight improvements and the report gets better and more information is provided. So this should be familiar uh to Commissioners. I do want to commend Kelly and our engineering team and Lucy and Mike for. Gather all of the detail. This is a an effort that um collects many parts and pieces throughout the year as part of our. Construction program. And as a recipient of federal funds, we need to um collect and. Maintain and report on not only our federal aid projects, but all projects that. Public Works undertakes, and this is a that summary.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions?
Not for me.
Okay, it's uh all good to move forward.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, next up. We have come to a decision point on our um Romance Hill. Project, and as you know, Commissioners, we've been going through a design preliminary engineering phase on this project. And working to secure a permit with the Navy to have a crossing. And this is a a connector, one of two connectors that were identified to. Into the S R three freight corridor. So we've got Romance Hill and Log Yard Road were the two approved connectors. And D O T is preparing or includes in their design concept. And what we have before you today is our um cost estimates at this point. For what it may take to complete the entire project. And this is based on recent information for the Navy rail crossing specifically. And Mike is here to present some more detail on that.
Morning Commissioners. Morning. Uh, several years ago, we uh or a few years ago, we hired steelings to prepare the engineering plans for this. So this is all uh, you know. All known that we're we're moving forward this. Recently, we had a meeting with the U T C and the P S A P. And all kinds of other acronyms. Um. And the results of the meeting, we finally determined that uh. That the Navy Railroad Crossing, if you if you can see in our budget impact here, uh, the easement, we still haven't determined what it actually costs. But the crossing design, so what happens is we have an application. And then the uh Chujit Sound and Pacific Railroad actually does their own design, so. Uh, we would pay them about seventy five thousand dollars upfront. And they would perform the work, the design, and then they would come back and say, uh, they would put it out for contract. Uh, the estimate was to be about one point five million dollars uh for construction. So what they do is they. They tear up uh about four thousand feet of of the rail, about two thousand feet each direction. Then they uh reinstall it with welded rails, and then they would do their crossing, the the gate work and and the uh. The sign. So this is no asphalt, there's no approach road, anything, it's just the crossing itself. Um, the issue is, one, once we initiate that, we're kind of, we're, I mean, we're tied in. The issue is, one, once we initiate that, we're kind of, I mean, we're tied into it because once the design is done. It's got to be constructed within four years or you're gonna go back and start over again with the, because the updated design criteria. So. They said it'd take about six to eighteen months to design it. And then about the same period of time, about six months to 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 construct. So. We're we're at this point of saying. You know, if we if we do the design, we're gonna have to do the construction. So we're looking for some guidance from from the board. And then we also added in here. A little bit of P right away, we're we're still gonna have to do for the road itself. And then the construction there is estimated around two to four million dollars. So. And then there's a possibility, not for sure, of design construction of the intersection with the freight corridor itself. Which could be up to one point five to two more million dollars there. So. There is positions here, obviously, that we can change or stop and stuff, but we're. We're, everything's kind of out in the open now to where where we, you know, know what the true cost of at least doing this crossing is. So. If there's any questions. Or comments.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a, just want to remind, you know, history being what it is, there were certain aspects that. I hope we're still looking at and keeping in mind. Number one, that was supposed to stay and maintain and be just a residential access, so small access. Because the road coming down really can't be improved above the capacity that it can already handle. At least that was the discussions at the time. With that also being said, I was able to attain and it was before you were there. Before you were in your position already, but I was able to go out and attain a letter from the property owners where they were offering the. Right away on the other side of the tracks. I understand Mr. Overton's on the other, so that'd be different, but they offered the right away and offered to do preliminary dirt work. In order to help this this along. I was also told back then, when we were talking to Jerry and going through this process. This is one of the reasons why time was so much of the essence is the. If we were able to establish the construction enough to where we had some type of small residential road that went into where they were connecting the freight corridor. They had to connect to it and and pay for that infrastructure, not us. If we were there early enough and we may not be, it may be too late, I don't know. But back then, they had to, the state had to account for hooking up to our road. And that was part of their design, part of their construction. So hopefully, we haven't lost that, those opportunities.
To speak to that, Commissioner Netherland, the last item for the freight corridor intersection, the one and a half to two million dollars. This was included in the. Request from the legislature to increase the twelve million, the freight corridor budget by twelve million. So a portion of that twelve million was specifically for the design and construction of the two intersections.
Good.
Yeah, so that's that's good news. We need to obviously keep bird dogging that. But that was, that was the intent.
And do you know about that letter?
We do. Yep. We've got a copy of that, Commissioner Netherland. And so, yes, so that would address some of the right of way.
And hopefully, we take advantage of their, if that, you know, this has been years. One of the problems we have Commissioners is we get these things today. But we do it five years from now, they may change their mind. I don't know. Because we also got that letter for Razor Road, and I don't know, I think it's changed hands now that property. So.
It has.
Yeah. So with that being said, though, hopefully, we can still take advantage of them doing dirt work. I know we didn't want to let them do everything because it won't be to our standard exactly how we like. But if we can cut costs by letting them do preliminary stuff. You know, on their properties especially, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so bottom line, we're looking at. About one point six million for the the rail crossing. And then that leaves another two to four for the actual road construction itself. And the question for Commissioners is what portion of this? Is. Do we want to consider to be? County funded project versus developer funded? I know in the past, we've talked about acquiring the corridor and securing that. The rail crossing. Mike, in my mind, needs to. That would be our, well, I suppose that could be developer funded as well. I guess the bottom line is, how much of this project? Are we wanting to contribute county funds? And or developer funds? And we can certainly chew on that a bit and come back and talk with Commissioners. But. And then to to put this in perspective, you may recall, we've got four point five million dollars in our budget for the future roads project or future roads. For exactly these types of projects where they're not well suited for a grant application. And we've kicked around Razor Road as a potential. We've talked about the potential for some improvements to the Shelton Gateway. Although Shelton Gateway, I do believe. Would be well suited to a paths and trails or. Another grant program. So we could certainly use some of the four point five as a match if needed. For the Shelton Gateway project. And then there's Log Yard Road and probably some other projects that. Mike hasn't even added to the list at this point.
Well, and again, history can change, you know, Commissioners can change history, but historically. One million of that money was put aside specifically for the Gateway project. That's where it is. That's where where it was put in. There was, the majority of it was put in for romance. There was a small amount put in for Wheelwright, which is no longer an issue anymore. And the remainder was Razor. That was the original. Reasoning behind it. Romance being several of the the biggest issues with romance, of course, is the safety issue for the community. If we have a catastrophe there. You have railways, trestles on both sides of the town. This gives an opportunity to bring traffic in and out. If those those trestles were to come down, also, it it comes out at the urgent care. And that's why the the fire departments and all were so on board with it at the time we're going through this process. Was their ability to access and get out.
Commissioners, is there any other information you would like to see from us to help? Further the discussion or direction for. For Public Works?
I would say just a couple of things, maybe in the near term is going back as Commissioner Netherland mentioned about the. Interest of the property owners in that area to to donate some right away. I would engage on that and see. If that's still part of their planning or or not. And then I would, I would just, you know, I think. As we look at both of these intersections, we're much closer now to the freight quarter coming in than. I know it's gonna sound ridiculous, but we're closer now than we have ever been to the freight quarter coming in. And so, you know, they're they're going through their design and, you know, and and their right away acquisition process and everything. And so. It will be here before we know it. And so, you know, planning for both of the intersections or connector roads that. Were funded in the legislative session this year. You know, I think we need to be making progress on both of those so that we're prepared. And so I would just say that what we do with Romance Hill, we should do it log yard. In terms of just being consistent on how we approach those with DOT and and all the affected parties around it. So. I would, I would do a little bit of digging on some of those issues first, see if that affects any of the presentation here in terms of budget. And then. In the meantime, I think the three of us need to. Kind of be noodling on what exactly we want to do with the Gateway project and and how we utilize the four and a half million dollar. Reserve that's there. Four and a half million dollars is a lot of money, but when you're looking at the price breakdown of this. Connector. The four and a half million dollars would be gone pretty quick. Or has that potential at least. And so we just need to be thinking about what the budget looks like and what what we're comfortable putting. Putting in terms of an investment in all of those projects.
I think what I'd like to to know is, has there ever been a a confirmed or agreed upon list? For priorities for the four point five million? I I don't know that I've ever seen one, but you know, if there's a list out there, I would love to to take a look at that. To see, you know, what what's been committed and where. And then continue that conversation. Agree with the other two Commissioners that. Priorities, things, sometimes we have a priority, but it gets superseded by what the state tells us to do.
Okay, Commissioner Netherland, any other? Items?
No, just thinking back on prioritization as Commissioner Trask had mentioned. I'm trying to remember if we ever actually did. We see, we did everything verbally, I know at the time, because it was a one, the majority of that money was moved one time. It was in the budget. It had been sitting there in the background. We knew it was there in the background during some tough times and. We finally moved it in order to have it dedicated specifically for this. And it was at that time that those. Decisions were made. It may be captured in some of the minutes, but I don't know that we ever created a document. That's what I was trying to remember and I can't quite remember it. So.
Oh, I'm sorry to.
That's all right. But I do know we did have the discussions, the commission level on what we wanted to do when we did it. And it was actually very, very simple. That's why I remember the one million was specifically. For the gateway. That's why we put it in there. The gateway project was being talked about then. We didn't have the exact dollar amounts. We just had the projects that. Needed to be worked on with the monies that we had. We had hoped we'd pick a couple more million and we still might at the end of this. Year, if we look at those dollars, we might find some money that we might decide we want to put specifically to new development. But no, that's, that's all I remember about it. And just, I want to point out one other thing I didn't add. Jerry House, it was funny after he came back in and we hired him back in. He explained a lot more about Romance Hill that I didn't know. And that was that that road was put in specifically to be the connector. To the bypass. And I didn't know that all the years in the community when we had issues with it and stuff, he had done all the work to look at all the other. Connectors that would be able to be a true connector in between. And the topography just didn't allow for it anywhere else but there. And that's how it ended up there. And as we look at different options, the main one is being able to connect to the middle of it. That is the the main purpose of that design.
So that brings up a quick question. So since Romance Hill is a, is going to be a designated connector, how does that impact? The the three that we have now. I mean, you know, the highway three currently. Because that's going to divert a lot of traffic or move a lot of traffic.
It should move one third of the traffic off before it gets to Belfair. But hopefully, it it's not expected that much would be utilized in that to come back down into town as much as. It's just not made for that type of.
I'm just wondering how. Because if it's a stop sign there at the bottom of Romance Hill, connecting on to that, that's where my concern is.
Sorry, I didn't catch that.
That's okay. That's okay. So I'm hoping that the state is going, ah. Let's, let's think about that one.
Yeah, and that's one of the intersections that was identified and included in the Belfair Planned Action EIS. That is one of the locations that we are collecting traffic impact fees for future improvements.
Great. Yeah, so many pieces to all these puzzles, right?
There are a lot. Yeah. Yeah, and Commissioner Netherland, we can go back and and check minutes. My recollection was that there were actually two. Two budgets where we gradually increased that dollar amount to four and a half million as our reserves increased.
That's correct.
Yeah. And if.
That was us just capturing more money. I don't think we ever changed any priorities at that time. We just had more money to capture. So we captured for the specific purpose of new roads.
Right. Okay, so what we can do is put together the list and then identify. Which of the projects or future potential projects could be funded through outside source, grant source. And then bring that back as well for Commissioners.
Is this a project that you have, I'm sure you have in the past, but recently, is this a presentation that you've made to Tip Cap or one that you will make to Tip Cap?
So we did present this information to Tip Cap last Wednesday as part of their regular meeting. And indicated that Commissioners would likely want to hear Tip Cap weigh in and make recommendations on this, on this topic.
Does it come up with anything or just is this something they're taking up for the future?
They plan to discuss at the next meeting.
Great.
That is why we created them, to make sure that it gets the the people's input instead of our political desires.
So Mike, anything that we need to be mindful about timeline on this?
As long as we still got that crossing, I'm, I'm happy. I was always so worried we were gonna lose that. People don't know, we gained that. That agreement for that crossing was not a given. We ended up doing some trading some time ago and. And I think it was already, you went to her and when she was in charge of that and said, you know, I thought we had an agreement and she still held up after five years. That she remembered the agreement and was supportive and helped us at the time. Didn't have to go that way. We could lose that. So I'd like to make sure that we, make sure we get that one no matter what, that crossing at least.
Yeah, I think that we've had some pretty clear indications all the way around that securing that crossing just takes a bit of money.
But she's retired now, so hopefully the people that took over.
Yep.
Still honoring her. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. It's it's something like that Mike mentioned. We had to, this, since it's a new crossing that is not. Initiated by the Navy, we need to take this to the Washington UTC. So that was the purpose of that. Diagnostic meeting prior to application to make sure everyone was on the same page and and that this is feasible and a supported crossing.
Yeah, and and just to add that, you know, if we waited another two or three or four or five, whatever years, that could change. It's just right now, at this point in time, they are, they're saying, yep, you can do it. Go ahead and apply. But the the application and the design initiates the timeline of four years that it has to be constructed. So that would be the, you know, that's the caveat that we would get the permit to do that. But it'd have to be constructed in four years or it has to go back and reapply.
I think that's why we had always talked about it being a simple, the simplest road possible, just to make sure it was established at the time with the developers. The property owners through their paying for and doing a lot of the work. To get it because it does benefit their properties. And it was expected of them that they would do a lot of the upgrades and stuff themselves. And they even put it in their letters in order to get our support.
Well, that's all we have on that topic then. Then Mike, want to give a quick report on the the lighting on Sand Hill?
Yeah, the. PD finally got their their fourteen foot arm. They put on a pole there at Sand Hill. So it's lighting up. More Sand Hill intersection than. SR three hundred, but that's, that was the intention. So. Have a look at it and see what they think. So.
Great job because it's still better. Great job because it's still better than what we had, which was nothing on one of the most dangerous intersections in this whole area. So you did a wonderful job. I'm so thankful.
And uh, we did the approach to the uh, the neighbors uh. There and they're going to allow us to go ahead and cut that brush back farther too, but we gotta wait for it to dry out to get, to get in there to do that. That'll, that'll help line of sight back towards Belfair.
That is all on our agenda today, commissioners.
Commissioners, anything for Loretta and Mike?
I got that.
Okay, great.
All right, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioners, the next item we have on our agenda is scheduled to start at eleven thirty with Department of Natural Resources. I don't see any of them on just yet, so if there's um, if there's commission discussion, we can do that now. If there's not, we can. Uh, break until eleven thirty.
I appreciate that break.
Okay, Commissioner Trask, go good?
I'm good with a break.
Okay, so we'll see you back here at eleven thirty. Okay, I think Mackenzie's back in and ready to go, so we will go ahead and get started. Um. Michelle from uh Department of Natural Resources, glad to have you with us. Um. Do you, do you have a presentation to share? I think there were some slides included in our packet, but if you need to share a screen, feel free to.
Yeah.
We'll just turn it over to you.
Okay, let's see if I've got this then. Yeah, thank you for having me. It was sort of short notice, so I really appreciate fitting this in. Um, we have a public hearing coming up on Wednesday, so. Uh, having your comments in advance is good. So, okay, let's see if I can. Hmm. Do this. Okay, can you see this?
Yes.
Great.
Looks good.
So, um, let's see. So I'm Michelle Zuckerberg. I'm a natural areas manager with Department of Natural Resources, Washington State. And I manage uh several conservation areas in Mason County, including Skookum Inlet. Um, Skookum Inlet Natural Area Preserve. So this presentation is to talk about the proposed boundary expansion for Skookum Inlet. And also at the end to um. Uh, talk a little bit about the, some of the grants that we're going for with uh RCO, WWRP grants that are coming up. As a part of the conferral process. So there's a couple other sites. So, um. I'm not sure how familiar you are with Washington State Natural Areas, so I'll just say a little bit about them. Um, you know, it's a system of natural areas. DNR manages fifty-eight preserves and thirty-nine. Natural Resources Conservation Areas on about a hundred and sixty-five thousand acres statewide. Several or. There are many in Mason County, Thurston County and around the area. So natural area preserves, they're uh. Informed by the Preserves Act, which was in nineteen seventy-two, where the legislature established protection. For areas of land and water that have retained their natural character. Important to preserving rare or vanishing flora, fauna, geological, natural. Historical or similar features of scientific or educational value. So these are kind of like the uh, the, the best of the best, the preserves. Um. And then the Natural Resources Conservation Areas Act nineteen eighty-seven, the legislature established. To conserve, maybe they have some ecological quality, but they're not as high quality. Also, high quality or important for natural systems, processes. Uh, areas where there can be low-impact public use and environmental education. So Skookum Inlet is a natural area preserve. Um, it's existing already. And we're looking at expanding the boundary, and there's a, a public process involved in that, there's hearing, um, and then the commissioner. There's a recommendation from the Natural Heritage Program to the Natural Heritage Advisory Council, and then. We go to public process and then the commissioner takes that information and uh chooses to, to designate the larger boundary by commissioner's order. So it's located in Little Skookum Inlet. Um, it's off Lynch Road. It's the access um. Of Highway one oh one. And the preserve itself was established in nineteen eighty-six. From a recommendation from the Heritage Program, and it protects occurrences of two types of intertidal wetlands or salt marsh communities. Um, they're classified based on their salinity, elevation and substrate. And the two protected there are low salinity high marsh and the moderate salinity high marsh, and they're considered. Uh, priorities two and three in the Natural Heritage Plan. And the plan is based on representation in the natural area system, rarity of these features and the degree of threat to the ecosystems. So um, the plants found in those communities include these here. Some uh salt grass, pickleweed, tufted hare grass. I don't know how, how much you're interested. We're interested in these plants specifically, so anyway, I could read them all. I think they're in your packet as well. So also, a Skookum Inlet has a, a Elson Creek, it's a small creek running through it. Um. And it has spawning habitat for chum, uh Coho, and it has resident cutthroat trout. And then Skookum Tree Creek, which is at the, you know, at the uh head of the inlet, has the presence of uh winter steelhead. So the preserve itself, uh, the current boundary is a hundred and sixty-five acres. Um, our current ownership is a hundred and forty-three acres. And the expansion area is an additional two hundred and ninety acres. A lot of that's um tide, tide lands. It includes mud flats, intact shoreline, adjacent forests situated on and above steep slopes, salt marsh and pasture. Um. And the purpose of this expansion is to provide long-term protection for ecological functions important to the preserves. Features like uh protecting the fresh water and saltwater inputs. Sediment delivery movement, water quality, nutrients from upland vegetation, as well as um large body debris. And it's a buffer from threats such as invasive plant species. So if the site were to be. Uh, developed, I think they're one and five, rural residential and also um. Uh, logged, so those clearings uh create invasive plant. Uh, threats to the preserve, because that's what we're working on uh protecting and valuing. Um. What else? So here's a map of the site. The green is. The current state ownership within the preserve boundary. The red dash. Uh, line is the expansion area proposed, and the yellow, those are lands eligible to be included in the, in the preserve. And the reason we say it like that is because um, we don't, the boundary is just an administrative process. We don't. We don't own them, they're not in state management or anything until we acquire them. Uh, from, from willing sellers at fair market value. So, so this just gives us the um ability, the kind of permission, the authorization to go and talk to landowners about whether or not they're willing to sell. And then pursue funding to acquire lands if it's privately owned. So that's, that's the boundary there. On here you can see another map showing the boundary in the proposed expansion in red. Uh, the hatchmark red areas, those are the primary features. Um, Heritage Program designated. And then the green is our current ownership. Um, some of the management that happens on natural air preserves include restoration. Uh, invasive species control. We have environmental education opportunities and research and monitoring. Skookum Inlet had a study of, that was part of other studies for buried wood to determine earthquake history, and it's used as a reference site for. Intact salt marsh ecosystems, you know, to, to look around the, in the uh southern Puget Sound to see what would these. Look like and what it, what do we want to restore other sites that are um more disturbed to, to look like this. So. Um. Years ago, we did a restoration at Skookum, it had a hatchery on it that was abandoned, fish hatchery. And a, a perched culvert that was a fish blockage. Um, so we removed all the infrastructure and it's been replanted and it's now growing, growing back as a forest and repairing habitat. So that's the Skookum Inlet part, and I can stop there um for any questions or concerns. Let's see if there's anything else on that. Maybe I'll stop sharing before I go into the other proposal.
Uh, Michelle, just, I think the only question that I have at this point is um, in that area, the proposed expansion area. How many individual uh landowners are you anticipating engaging with?
So I believe there's. Uh, either five or six private landowners, and they include Green Diamond and Taylor. Shellfish, um, the Uplands. And I think th- three, yeah, three other private la- landowners.
Okay.
So. And we've reached out to them, um, you know, sent them letters. We've been in conversations with Taylor and Green Diamond. Actually, the part of the impetus for this, we've been looking at expanding this for a long time, because it was very, it was originally quite small when it was designated. Um, and things are changing all around, right, in the county. And uh, Taylor was actually putting in a force practice application to log. And we were, we had talked to Bill, Taylor said, hey, we're actually really interested in that area. We've been looking at expansion. And um, would you be willing to wait so that we can acquire it? And they're, they're interested in selling, so they're gonna wait through this process and through the grant process. So.
Commissioners, anything for Michelle so far?
Yeah, you, you stole my questions, thank you very much. Um, yeah, just wondering, and what was, what's the feedback from um like Green Diamond? Um, I'm assuming that, that, that the tribe is also supporting this?
Uh, yeah, we, we reviewed the proposed boundary with the tribe before it went to the um, through the Heritage Council process. And they had some modifications that they recommended for us. They've recently purchased land in that area. So um, and they're supportive, they're supportive of conservation and, you know, that whole area has cultural resources, so they're supportive of. Protection of those, and we will work with them on, on all of that. Um, Green Diamond, they're willing to sell. Um, so. We don't know if we'll pursue funding this round because it'll probably be expensive to buy, but um, yeah, they're willing, they're willing to sell in that area.
I know that they, they just harvested some of the, the trees in that area.
Yeah, it's definitely part of their proposals, so we've been talking to them about that.
Okay, okay. And um, so your hearing is this Wednesday, and I won't, I wanted to attend, but I won't be able to. Um, so if you could share, you know, some of the, the comments from uh, from the hearing from residents and others. That would be, I'd be very interested in that.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, I will make sure we do that. We'll be recording, so those will be available.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions on that? Oh, you're on.
I usually support the commissioner whose district that is uh. For myself and my years with the Alliance to Healthy South Sound and the Hookah Corrie Council, this is one thing that does work. Is uh taking these lands and doing it this way. My only issue over the years has been to make sure that it's an arms-length transaction and not uh. Changing uh uses and and restricting uses to bring the value down before doing it. That's how they did it years ago. We were able to make some major changes with that. The fact that you're doing it as an arms-length transaction, I'm very supportive of it.
Yeah, we go through third-party appraisal and then appraisal review, and it's Yellow Book and RCO.
Yep.
Checks all of that, you know, lots of boxes to check, so. Yeah, um, okay, well, let, let me go to the next uh part. I'll share screen again. So um, we have a couple proposals for this round of RCO's. WWRP um grant program in the natural areas category. And so I will just share those with you. This is part of the conferral process that, that we do with counties. Uh, let's see. Let me go. So one of them is Skookum Inlet. Um. Uh contingent on the process going forward with the expansion, uh, that's the Taylor piece right there. It's about seven acres. That we're looking to acquire. Um. Another is a Kennedy Creek natural area, so. A is actually in Thurston County. Uh, it's still on the map for you, but parcels B and C, they're within, ones within the preserve, the others within the NRCA, Natural Resource Conservation Area. And that's about eleven acres in um Mason County. We're interested in acquiring. And then there's a site called Schumacher Creek Natural Area Preserve. And that is between um McCreeby Road and I guess you take, well, Shet- Shetland, Shetland Road. So Lake Limerick, it's past the golf course, that area. Um, it's a bog. And uh, with Schumacher Creek running through it, it's very interesting ecosystem. And there's two parcels there, uh total of ten acres that we're looking to acquire. All of these have um. Willing, interested landowners, you know, if we have the right appraisal value and all that, so they've all been informed and provided us some. Uh, recognition of their, or acknowledgement that they're willing to sell. So those are the, those, before I go off of these, do you have any questions about the maps?
I do not.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Great. So. Any questions about that?
Just uh, you, you have, it mentioned the hearing coming up. What's kind of the process to do the hearing? Um, when, when is the next time we would expect to hear from you or DNR?
That's a good question. I don't know if there's a formal reply to the county. Um, so we, we do the hearing. We take all the information. Um, we put it in a package and forward it to Commissioner Public Lands. And she decides on whether or not to um, to sign by commissioner's order the expansion of the, of the boundary. So then you would hear from that maybe some, but I can certainly um circle back around. Right after the hearing and let you know, and also kind of keep you informed in the process if you want.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I think it would be good to have the.
Okay.
You know, kind of close the loop on, on the process, just so we know. You gotta, it's, you know, I mean, I think you, you do a great job at informing us when. The process gets started and then sometimes by virtue of all the other things that we have going on, we kind of lose track of.
Yeah.
Process ends up, so having, having that loop closed, I think would be helpful for all three of us.
Okay, great. Yep.
Great. Commissioners, any other questions for Michelle?
I don't, just look forward to keeping um updated and, and the, the process and the progress.
Great. Well, thank you. Thanks for your time. And um, I will keep you on the loop.
Excellent. Thanks so much, Michelle.
All right, take care.
Uh, Commissioners, one last time, anything for discussion before we adjourn for today?
Got nothing.
We're here.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second.
We've been seconded, we stand adjourned. If there's no objection, we will stand adjourned.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.